Call to order, roll call.
Commissioner Clifford?
Here.
Commissioner Copper?
Here.
Commissioner Simpson?
Here.
Commissioner Cook?
Here.
Let the record show that Commissioners Walker, Griffin, and Carey are absent.
Thank you. Agenda review, we have our standard stuff and one continued public hearing. And new business is regarding the Charter Committee. Are there any additions or changes?
No ma'am.
All right, thank you. There is no consent agenda, moving right along. Counsel liaison, Mayor Middleton?
Well, one of ours tonight is the appointment of the Charter Committee, and you've already got that covered. Don't forget the Veterans Day event on Monday, November 11th, if you're around, that's a big one for us. And also, Julie's going to talk about our work with the county on the Twelton Sherwood 99 corridor.
Thanks. I just, at the last Planning Commission meeting, there was a lot of citizen input about the Twelton Sherwood road widening project, and the council did have additional people come at their meeting, and they discussed it a little bit more. And the council, at their last meeting, made a motion directing staff to work with ODOT and the county to get a write-in off of 99W. So we're trying to talk with the county and ODOT about that. So I just wanted to follow up, we wanted to follow up that the council did have some additional discussions on that.
That's great, thank you. All right, there's no more announcements, then we have staff announcements.
I have quite a few. Mr. Middleton mentioned the Veterans Day. It's going to be held at the high school this year, and indoors because of, so it's going to be a bigger event, and it's going to be inside, so that's worth noting. We're going to have to have a discussion about future agenda items. So your next, your November, second meetings in November and December fall on the day before Thanksgiving and the day before Christmas. Obviously, we don't have the interest in having you here, you know, you have family in town and those types of things. So I'm, put together, we have one, two, three, four, five potential projects that will come before you. Three of them are legislative in nature, which means that you'll be making a recommendation to the city council. Two of those are TSP amendments that have been put forward by Washington County. And the third one is a map and text amendment for the Villa Luca site over off of Minnekey Road. It all, they're trying to decide right now whether or not they want to run a PUD at the same time, so that one may or may not come in those dates. So I'm looking at tentative dates of December 16th or 18th for our second meeting in December, and November 20th or 21st in our November, did I say that wrong? December 16th and 18th, or November 20th and 21st? And just wanted to poll the commission and see whether or not I would be able to get a quorum that night. And I'll actually just think about this, look at your calendars, I'll send this out in an email. And then if you can let me know in time to provide public notice, we'll just handle it that way. So I'll put it in an email so you can actually consider what's going on. The annual Boards and Commission Appreciation Dinner is scheduled for Tuesday, December 3rd. We would love for you guys to be there. We haven't had that much participation from the commission in the past. It's at 6:00 PM, and it's right here in City Hall. It's a catered event, Serpenter Filet Mignon, I think you get to direct the menu. But it won't be the hummus and chips that we bring, it will be something nicer, so. The November 12th, the next Planning Commission meeting, I don't really have anything specific on the agenda, but I wanted to have a work session with the Planning Commission, preferably at 6:00, 6:30, to get you out of here early. With two things on that, you have a Boards and Commissions report. Remember, every year we did the SWOT analysis this year, and actually last year, I guess they switched it up. And they're asking for the three most significant accomplishments for this past year as a Board or Commission, and what are the three, two or three major goals for 2014 as a Board or Commission. And so I'm going to also send this out in an email to you, but I'll go ahead and pass this out to the four that are here. And if you could just think about that and write those down, that could be something that we'll discuss on coming from a commission, how would you like to report to the council? And then I think that tentatively, they plan on discussing this at the December 3rd Appreciation Dinner. Last night, we had our first Citizens Advisory Committee for the Transportation System Plan Amendment. And they heard a TSP 101 from the consultants to kind of understand what a TSP is supposed to look like and how it's supposed to function for the communities. And then they also heard what our charges as a committee and what we're doing with this TSP update. We have 10 people appointed to that committee, 11 if you count Commissioner Griffin as the liaison. And last night, we had nine of those 10 present, so that was very promising. And we have a really good representation from various disciplines out there, various citizen groups, so you know, interest. With that, I will ask if you have any questions of staff?
No, that was a lot of information.
I'll follow up with an email, because I do know it's a lot of information. There's some dates that I threw in there, so.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, community comments. If anybody would like to speak on any matter that is not on the agenda tonight, we'd ask you to fill out a blue card and come forward. Neil?
Neil Shannon, 23997 Southwest Redfern Drive. I'm not really addressing the commission on this subject as much as I am also taking the opportunity, knowing that this meeting is recorded and broadcast to the remainder of the citizens of Sherwood, for those who do observe it. We do have an election coming up here regarding the Brookman Road annex. I am in opposition to the partial annexation of Brookman Road. I am very much in the favor of the entire Brookman Road concept plan being adopted by the city. I recognize that two years it failed, two years ago, it failed a vote of those people who lived in the Brookman Road concept area. At this time, a portion of the property owners are seeking to bring in roughly 97 acres of the Brookman Road concept plan into the city of Sherwood. And I feel that that is diluting the opportunities that we would have with the Brookman Road area. I would much prefer to see the, those voices in favor of the concept plan, or excuse me, in favor of annexing the city, join with the remainder of the property owners in the area, or if developers feel that there's good opportunities in the area, that they make, might consider purchasing some property in speculation, and then bringing their voices forward. But to bring in only a portion of it, creating a jigsaw property line for the city of Sherwood, to create differences between neighboring properties, those who are within the city boundaries and those who are not within the sound city boundaries, I believe would bring complexity to the planning of the city of Sherwood. So I'm urging property owners, or the citizens of Sherwood, to vote against the Brookman Road annex. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments? All right, then, we will go on to old business, which is the continued public hearing. And I have a script to read, if I can find my. "The public hearing on major site plan modification SP 1302 is called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as followed. Staff report will be 15 minutes, questions by the hearing authority for staff. We're going to open the public, we're going to reopen the public hearing for testimony. The applicant has 30 minutes, split between presentation and rebuttal. Persons in favor of the application will have four minutes each, persons opposed will have four minutes each, and then the rebuttal from the applicant is the remainder of the 30 minutes. We'll, at that time, close the public hearing. No other comments will be heard from the public or the applicant. There'll be final comments by staff, up to 15 minutes, and then questions of staff, if any, by the commission, and then discussion by the commission. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the blue testimony forms and submit it to the Planning Commission Secretary. The chair will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any question should be addressed through the chair. When you come forward to speak, please state your name for the record. In deciding whether to approve or deny the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria found in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria identified in the staff report are available in the room this evening. The written and oral testimony must be directed toward these criteria or other criteria the person speaking believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties of an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the city council or Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. At this time, I would like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte, ex parte context bias or conflicts of interest."
Just last week, in an unrelated business, I had contact with landscape architect Kurt Lango. I'm also a landscape architect, and we were dealing with business that was unrelated, and there was never any comment or any discussion on the agenda at all.
Okay.
I am the Foundation for the Performing Arts and the Voices for Performing Arts Technical Director now. However, it does not, will not affect
Your ability.
My ability to rule on this.
Okay. Not at this time. And I believe all my previous contacts were in public meetings. I would ask that if anybody is testifying tonight, we need you to submit a blue card for the video. You only need to give your name, but if you want to be notified of any further actions, you must complete the card with your address, so that we may mail the decision or any further action to your mailing address. All right, the Planning Department will now present the staff report.
Thank you, Chair and Commission. I'm going to go just take you briefly through my last presentation, refresh you where we were at. So the public hearing was held open to allow additional testimony to be provided. During that two-week period of time, the only people that actually submitted any testimony was the applicant, and they submitted revised plans that were in your packet, and I believe that they will be speaking to those tonight. And I have a presentation on the computer here that they will be speaking to. So just a reminder, this is the old Cannery Building, I'm sorry, the old Machine Works Building. And because of some issues with the structure itself, after it was approved in 2012, it was determined that that was an unstructurally sound building and had to be demolished. This is the previously approved elevation. This was for a retrofit of that existing building. And now that that building is no longer there, the applicant is proposing to build, construct a new building in the same footprint. The only difference in the footprint location is, with the old building, there was a portion of the building on the south, I guess southwest, or southeast corner, that was actually within the public right-of-way, that's outside of the public right-of-way now. This is a minor modification, I'm sorry, a major modification to the site plan. It's a final development plan, was approved under PUD 0901 in 2012, and then a variance has been requested to reduce the required amount of glazing on the south side of the building. This was the previously approved site plan, so it shows, I guess most importantly, the footprint of the building, because that is what they are primarily affecting with this development. And then some of the trees that are up there at the north, there are three trees that they'll be having to remove. There's the boundary of the site plan modification, it doesn't get into any of the parking. The variance that was requested was to standard 16.162080H, which basically requires that the windows occupy at least 50% of the length and 25% of the ground level wall area. I have no idea how that got back in there. The current proposal has 3,000 square feet, so the split that was approved in the original decision, it couldn't be more than a 40/60 split. And in this, it's actually 20, or 20% of commercial as opposed to 40, so they're well within the confines of what was previously approved. And then Section 16.90030A1B3, there was discussion in the last one, and I just want to reinforce this, that the limit, that code section, which is a local code section, specifically limits the scope of the review to the modification requests. There was discussion last week that, you're the Planning Commission, you can, you can open it up to discuss parking, you can open it up to discuss landscaping and other issues. And the fact of the matter is, is certainly you can discuss those items, and certainly you can try and make a ruling on them, but those are things that have really no bearing as we move forward. Anybody could appeal that, and it wouldn't hold up in court, because the scope of this review is very limited. These are the revised revisions that the applicants submitted, and I guess the point that I want to make is that there was a large blank wall on the south and west portion of the building that you had discussed with the applicant. And what they did, and I'll let them go into more detail, is that they've changed up some of the materials and then added some glazing along that elevation to add some visual interest to the site. And I think I'll let them discuss that more. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission still approve the application with the proposed conditions, subject to the revisions. These are the revisions that I discussed with you last, last time, and I just wanted to make sure that we didn't lose sight of these modifications, modified conditions. You might also modify other conditions, and I want to make sure that we capture all of that in your final motion, whether you approve or deny it. And then I added that the revised exhibits now become Exhibit K and entered into the record. With that, that concludes my staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions of the staff at this time? I do have one, and it goes back to the last slide, which is the B4. So I wanted to clarify that the elevation of the building illustrates, the building satisfies the standards of 16.162, that's the base, or is that the entire? Because we got into parapets, bases, and glazing, and I want, because I think if this has to do with the base being two feet all the way around, the applicant demonstrated that at the last, and we could strike it along with B1 if the commission determines that's what we were doing.
You're correct, it's the base of the buildings. And from that standpoint, staff is certainly agreeable with the applicant, that they did provide a different, different base, and that I do believe that it could be a condition that you strike.
So under discussion, if you could just remind us, that's?
Yes, ma'am.
Pretty sure by the time we get there, I've forgotten that and that, and have lost what I was supposed to be doing. Good thing I haven't written down. "The applicant may now present testimony and arguments." And you have up to three minutes, but you certainly do not need to use all of them, since they have to be split with rebuttal. 30. Up to 30. Three's fine, too.
No plans to filibuster tonight, so.
Okay, good.
Good evening, Commissioner and Planning Commission members, or Chair and Planning Commission members. We won't take the full 30 minutes tonight, but we did want to just kind of walk through some of the highlights of our presentation from last time, and then talk a little bit more about the particular changes, which we could do none of, or some of, or all of, really kind of up to you, but we wanted to throw some ideas out for you, to have some things to consider tonight, so hopefully we can get to the point of making a decision.
Before you start, can you give your names?
Sure.
For the record, when you start speaking.
My name is Tom Pessimer, and I'm the Assistant City Manager, the Project Manager for this project. Address is 22560, Southwest Pine Street. And with me, I have Keith Jones and Scott Wagner. Keith will kind of present the information out of our, that we presented before, and Scott will kind of cover the building issues. So like I said, you know, we could change none, or any of the things that we put forward in that elevation, but I look forward to getting a decision tonight.
Good evening, my name is Keith Jones. I work for Harper-Hoff Peterson Regalas. We're at 205 Southeast Spokane Street, Suite 200, Portland, Oregon 97202. Our firm has done the planning and engineering work going back to 2009 on the project. So going back to the last Planning Commission meeting, I submitted an email addressed to Brad Kilmeade that had three requested changes to the staff recommendation. And as Brad had presented, there's two of those that look like that could be struck from the record. That was the landscaping requirement in the building base. What I do want to just briefly go over was the condition for the parapet, and that's condition B3. And what that section of the code requires is that you install a two-part parapet around the entire perimeter of the building. And what we presented last time was, we don't think architecturally that the two-part parapet works on the entirety of the building, and can work well on top of the retail portion, the lower area that's fronting on Pine Street, just given the massing of the building and its need to be a theater in the back, it just doesn't work with architectural design. And our justification for the Planning Commission allowing not entirely follow that code provision was going back to the 2009 Plan Unit Development Approval, which allowed some exceptions to standards based on an innovative project through the PUD process. And part of that approval was to develop an architectural pattern book that laid out the requirements that the phases of the PUD will follow. And on page 12 of the pattern book, it has that section of code listed about providing the parapet, and then it does go and say that the machine works phase of the, of the project is not required to meet that code provision in its entirety. And so that's, that would be our justification as to not requiring the building, not requiring the parapet. So from the last meeting, we did hear from the Planning Commission that the wall that faces Columbia Street needed some design work. And as you've seen, we've went back and did some work on that wall and put that in the packet. And so Scott Wagner from Anker Moisten's here to go over that with you.
Good evening, everyone. Scott Wagner with Anker Moisten Architects. We're at 6720 Southwest McAdam Street in Portland. And we really did take to heart what you said, there was considerable discussion with more than one commissioner about that southwest corner. And so Brad, why don't you turn that first, so let's look at our site plan, just the development plan. That's right, he gave me remote control, it's pretty cool up here. And so we look at a building, you see the little, that's our building there, it really does have, you know, three sides that face the public. And yet, there are a couple of sides that are more important than others. So we know there's, you know, Pine Street's very important, the Passaic, which faces the city, the historic part of town, and parking is important. And then you have Columbia, which is a little bit more subdued, and Washington, which is actually our true service side. So we sort of have a situation where we sort of have two service sides of the building, and sort of two public sides. And then the public side sort of comes around onto Columbia, because the retail, you know, faces south partially as well. So, you know, the south side of the building benefits from retail for a while, but then it becomes service side as you move towards Washington. I mean, just, that's the nature of the beast there with a back service door, stairs, that sort of thing happened, you know, parking lot on Columbia, New Columbia. So there's some issues there that were just the reality of, say, the planning from a site perspective. Next one. So we look a little closer, and what, the discussion, and I think was a good one, was what is the context of, say, its neighbors? Is it a good neighbor architecturally on the sides that are not the main doors and don't have retail, that sort of thing? So, so we look at the south side, and we say, well, there is some activity for a while, and then it becomes services you see there. But the west side on Washington has considerable landscaping, so we take advantage of that. So, next one. So this is our, our scheme is up two weeks ago, where, and I think rightly so, they were saying, okay, there's a vantage point from Washington, from the neighbor, that would look like this. We didn't have a perspective last time, but I thought it was really important to say, here it is in the 3D view, standing, looking at the southwest corner of the building. So there are trees there, you know, there's the, on the left-hand side is that more heavily landscaped area on, on the west side of the building, but there are trees that march along the sidewalk there. But even with that, the wall next to it was a relatively blank wall. It was one material, that's our ground face block. And then we tried to frame it and use some metal panel elements to sort of break that down at the top and give it some shape and sort of a, not a flat, straight profile, but some deviation, we thought that was important. So there's that, that was one issue that was raised. I think there it is, you know, we're not, we're not hiding that that's what it looked like in perspective. But then there is an issue there for someone who lives across the street, and might be walking or driving in the area from Washington to Columbia, what about that? What about that vantage point? And then the third thing was interesting in our discussion before was, why aren't there any windows there at all? So, okay, we talked about that, just briefly, we said, well, that corner of the building is a, is makeup and dressing, for example. So our first thought was not to put windows there at all. If the show is going on, you don't want light leak into the stage in any way, so we deliberately avoided that, I think. On the other hand, because of the issue of adding detail and interest to that corner, we reconsidered that. So let's go to the next one, and I'll tell you why. We're trying to respond to all these things and end up with a composition that makes sense for the building, as if it had always been there, for example. So let's take it apart just for a second. So we look at the corner, and we had just one material before. Now we think we should, we should break that up with more than one material. But not just any material, we'll find there, you'll see the person sitting on, standing on the corner, right next to them is our concrete base, that's the floor line that you see. But above that, right by that person, we're thinking we bring more of the nicer materials around at that corner, which in this case would be brick. So we take a segment of the nicer materials that are on the other, more public sides of the building, use a brick corner there. So now we have brick, we didn't have that before. But then we want to have a little more shape, and have your eye to go more places, so we actually took the metal panels and brought it down to meet the brick at the corner. So we thought that helped at interest in changing materials, and just a nicer feel. And scale-wise, you can see from that person there, they're not by a big tall wall of one material now, there's actually like a base in the middle and almost a top, with three materials next to them. That seemed to work. But then we thought, okay, what about that window issue? So we reconsidered that. The window, we're saying, for a variety of reasons, you could put the window there. And here's why. So if you needed a true blackout on the show, you would say, you'd either close the door of the stage, or we'd provide blinds or shades on that window, so you could still blackout against the stage here. That seemed reasonable for that kind of situation. At night, you know, you got the same issue, maybe, you know, if there's actors going in and out, and they need to, you know, change clothes and makeup and all that kind of stuff. There's a light on anyway, so that, you know, that, maybe that's an issue, you still have to close the door, that kind of thing. And the stage does have masking drapes, so that's something that include from the audience standpoint, is sort of if that door is being opened and closed, light or not, daytime or night, the masking drapes still prevent you and I and the audience from seeing what's happening in that room, and affect the light spill, so it sort of mitigates that by the nature of the masking drape. So that seemed reasonable. And then we thought, what about a situation where it's not makeup intensive at all? There's other events that could take place here. For example, what if there was a guest speaker at a noon luncheon and needed a green room, or a band that was setting up for something in the mid-afternoon? And now we're not talking about makeup stations and that sort of thing at all, that's all sort of tucked away or not used, and it's a great, a place for someone to wait for a while. Then a window actually is a bonus. We thought, now there's a place for natural light, sort of makes sense. And that could happen just as easy throughout the year, as the performance makeup intensive shows. So let's say, we said, well, let's just try it. So we put the window in, it's high. This is a window placed above where you would put your makeup station, your mirror, and your side lights. It's above that, essentially a clerestory that runs through part of the room, and doesn't get in the way of any of the function and makeup and that kind of thing. You still could do the blinds if you wanted to. And it still gives, I think, a presence of room, human activity, and adds a whole other level of detail, that just a change in materials didn't do. So we think that worked. Altogether, all those materials sort of meet together at the window, and we thought that was, that was a reasonable addition, and a good one, truly could make it more active, more interesting. The resulting of that was a composition that we liked, we thought it was appropriate to put in front of you and say, what do you think? I mean, is this enough? And we think it does address the kind of visual concerns we talked about from last time. Thank you. There's one more, just the other regular.
So, yes, thank you. So we, unless I- So we, unless you have questions for us now, we or later, we'll just save our comments for the rest of our time for the rebuttal.
Does anybody have any questions of the applicant now or?
I just have a general, more of an architectural question and also sun question. If the, if the windows did go in and later on, if they determined that there was too much light coming in, maybe during the hot summer months, is it possible to incorporate maybe at a later time, putting in a fabric and metal canopy along that light or along that window?
I think you could. If you get a shade that would black it out and prevent, you know, sunlight from going too far into the room. I mean, we have onings, sort of a system of onings around the building, very simple canvas lines on a metal frame. It could be added to that, just to take care of that, reduce any kind of glare effect to each, sure, possible.
Or make them shadow boxes or whatever they call fake windows, just completely wall them out from the inside.
I just wanted to take an opportunity to use 10 minutes and 41 seconds.
Okay.
Just for the record.
Any other questions before we call for?
So is there a plan to use, so are we going to be using a window treatment in, on the interior that will blackout when needed?
That's the intent, right? We'll do blinds or a shade, so you can't control it. You can, natural light if it's appropriate and close it down if you need to, absolutely.
Thank you very much. 19 minutes, 19 seconds or something left. All right, I see blue cards heading my way. All right, Lori Randall.
Lori Randall, I live in Old Town Sherwood. So I saw the pictures, not especially in love with those windows, I got to tell you. So is the idea of a mural completely gone? Did anyone even look at that? I'd still rather see a mural than those ugly little windows. The other thing that, as long as I have the microphone and hopefully people listening that I would like to say, because I'd like City Council to hear it, is the smaller retail space in that, in the art center, I would like to see the city give over to visual artists to do a cooperative gallery, okay? That was the intent. The original intent of that building was always to have performing and visual arts in it. I'd like to see visual arts in it. So I would encourage everybody to say to City Council that you would like to see that space offered up to visual artists for a cooperative gallery, for classrooms, for all kinds of programming. The programming is ready to go. It's an easily funded thing through the, the nonprofits that are already in town that would take advantage of it. So as long as I have the chance to say it, but there we go.
Thank you very much. Eugene?
Eugene Stewart, property owner, across the street from it. And I'm sorry, but in my mind, it's not very visually acceptable, the color schemes that's on here. It almost looks like a mausoleum or something Darth Vader-like. It doesn't, to me, doesn't remind me of Old Town. If this is the best that we can have, then I guess we're stuck with it, but it just doesn't seem right. And when you're measuring the heights requirements, two things. Heights requirement, are you measuring from the base of the sidewalk to the top to see if you meet the heights requirement? Or what needs to be done there? And the other thing is, is that since the building's tore down, why do we not have a requirement for the six-foot planning strip there that is supposed to be kind of a visual breakup of the building from the residential neighborhood that's behind it? The other thing is, is that from what Brad sent out on Citizen Involvement Plan, I don't think you meant that goal one. Not necessarily saying you abandoned this, but at least I think the Planning Commission and Brad need to sit down and figure out what the Citizens Involvement Plan is, because from what he sent out, the Planning Commission is kind of in charge of it. But yet, all the time I spoke about it, they said, well, no, it's up to the City Council. So we need to, to find out what is the Sherwood Citizen Involvement Plan and start following it and make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no other testimony forms. And I see no one else leaping up to run up to testify, so I will ask the applicant for rebuttal.
I just heard a couple of comments that were directed at the code. One of them was about the building height. The maximum building height's 40 feet and the maximum height of this structure is 26 feet. So even depending on how you measure it, I don't think we'd be anywhere close to the maximum building height.
So is that, so from the sidewalk on the back where that little person's standing, it's 26 feet from the top of her head? So adding six feet to that would be another maybe 32 feet?
Yeah.
So that's?
Correct. Go ahead.
Just to address the site, does fall, you know, more than you think. So even from Pine, you know, starting the sort of the northeast corner, working your way down Pine is about 30 inches drop and then it drops another almost three or four feet by the get to that southwest corner. So the building proper from finished floor to the top is, is more of the sort of 20-25 range. And then you have to add five or six feet for that, where that woman's standing right there.
Okay.
But we don't exceed the height at any rate.
My understanding is, is the, the heights measured from average grade, is that correct? Or is it's just sidewalk grade?
It's a reference datum and it kind of depends on whether or not we have 10 feet of fall or not. It's a very complicated thing. I'd be happy to get into it if you'd like.
If?
But I don't believe that, and, and we would verify that they don't exceed the height again at building.
I think it's not close enough to be an issue. But I do appreciate you looking it up and telling us.
The, the other comment was about Lance, I believe, landscape strip along Columbia. So again, it's a Plan Unit Development and all the streets were laid out. They're kind of unique streets and we have, you know, the downtown streetscapes coming in off Pine, turns back into a curbed street. We have green street planters along a lot of it. So a lot of that was all already worked out and, and part of our Plan Development Approval. So that's, that's why we're not changing the street design for Columbia. Plus it's, really doesn't, it acts as a one-way, you know, connector with angled parking and it's just unique in its own right. So that's, that's why. Other than that, I didn't hear any comments that were directed at the code or approval criteria.
The color palette. The color palette.
Well, the, the Canary Square, the whole PUD development has its own set of color criteria that we follow. The kind of warm tones and, and doing sort of browns and that sort of, you know, natural, national tones, you know, sort of mimicking nature with the color, that's exactly what we're doing. Because we feel that is the right thing to do in this, to be consistent with other buildings that are there and will be in the future. That's where the palette comes from, is actually the PUD requirement themselves.
Just on the, on the new plans, I noticed there's an empty planter along. So if you could just clarify, that's going to be, do you have the ones that have the trees in them, then you actually have an empty planter?
Oh, well beyond there are light poles.
Okay.
The drawing doesn't show enough to your right. There's actually two light poles and another tree before you reach Pine Street.
Okay.
It's not shown in the view, sorry.
All right, are there any?
Yeah, I'll just address one other comment that got brought up real quickly. And that was in regards to a potential mural. Obviously, we're not proposing a mural or anything. We did take a brief look at that and certainly that wall is, is rough. I suppose you could put some sort of skin coat over it. I know that people do murals on brick walls of, from time to time and they have to put some sort of coating over the wall before they could actually do something. Certainly, if you do metal or something like that, it would be more difficult to, to do something like that. But again, we did take a look at that and it certainly wouldn't be doable without some work, but it wouldn't be overly difficult under the.
It doesn't preclude it if the community wants to do it later.
That's right. But it's certainly not something we're proposing at this time and probably would be difficult if we tried.
All right, any more questions for the applicant? All right, then we will close the public hearing. Thank you very much. And any final comments from staff?
None, not unless you have any questions with me.
No, I think it's out to this. Any questions, if we have any questions of staff? And then we go straight into discussion.
Yep.
All right, so I was going to start with the, the initial recommendations that Brad had for the B1. I don't know if you can pull that. So based on what the applicant submitted in their October 7th email, I don't believe that Condition B4 applies anymore because it was a request to have them provide plans that show a base all the way around it. Is the commission with striking B4 and the other changes that Brad has recommended in, on the screen now, or is the commission generally in favor of these items? So we can go into the very difficult?
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Okay, so, so the easy ones are done.
Yep.
Okay, so then I'd like to hear any commission comments regarding the variance request for the glazing standard as it's been requested. Again, the request is for a variance to have a reduction in it. And if they've met the requirements for a variance, did they do it, you know, in the minimalist amount available? And still, I, I read this, it's standards maintained to the greatest extent reasonably possible while permitting reasonable economic use is how our code calls for variances. And so the question is, do we believe they've met that criteria?
I think so.
Yeah, based on what I'm seeing and what the explanation was. I feel it's acceptable.
I, I concur. I think that we've, with the changes they've made, they've, the code calls for them to encourage interesting and active ground floors where the activities are happening within the building. And the activities are not happening in the, on this corner, but they have brought pedestrian scale interest to the side of the building so that it is architecturally appealing to anybody going by.
I think it looks a lot better, the changes, than it did previously. I mean, I was not a fan of the way the prior version looked.
Yeah, I appreciate the applicant's effort to, to do that. So if there's no further discussion or questions, I would ask for a motion. Or wait, I get, someone smarter than me is?
Did you want to discuss the?
Parapets? So the, that's not actually part of the variance, it's part of the finding of the staff is that the parapets were per the PUD to be on all sides of the building. But applicant's testimony was that the machine works building and the use of this building as a community center would not work well with parapets on the theater side.
Yeah, I agree. I think that we had a lot of discussion on that two weeks ago and I, I think that as it's shown in this final look, I think is fine.
I agree.
And, and I would add to that finding that the intent of the code was to have a top, a middle and a base in all the buildings. And the way they've wrapped around the middle all the way around creates a top, middle and base that is consistent with what the PUD called out.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. So there are a couple of opportu, oh, are you ready for that Commissioner Copper to make a motion?
Yep. I move the Sherwood Planning Commission approve the application for SP 12-01.
No, it's 13-02.
13-02? It is. 13-02, major modification to the site plan for the community center.
I second it.
Not done. Based on the applicant testimony, public testimony received, analysis findings and conditions, as well as with accepting the changes as proposed by staff.
I second it.
Yes.
For a clarification, I, I know that this is the intent, but I just want to make sure it's on the record, that that's, it's based on the revised elevation.
I'm sorry, yes, based, yes, based on the revised elevation that we, with the last item that we were given with the new elevation. So with the windows and the changes to the architectural features.
All right, so that is the motion?
So that is the motion.
And you're going to second?
Third time.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion approved. Thank you very much. All right, on to new business. That is a discussion regarding the Planning Commission appointment to the Charter Committee. Brad, would you like to tell us what this means?
I would like maybe Julia and the mayor to talk about it. Essentially, they're setting up a committee and they want liaison from every board and commission to participate in that committee to review the charter. It's, it was written in 2005, I believe, so this is, would be its first actual citizen review and I'll let them speak to the intent.
I think you just, the, the idea, basically as I understand it, our charter was adopted in 2005 and it's not uncommon. In fact, we, in fact, it's recommended to update the, or to review the charter for housekeeping things about every five years. So it's been about eight years since the charter was adopted and so it's really a good time to, to review it. And as I, if I understand it correctly, this will be the first time there's actually a, a charter review committee that will be doing that. And what the council has decided to do is have the different boards and commissions because there's a lot of knowledge and ability, you know, you've already got connections into the community through your different, the different boards and commissions. So they want to have a representative from each board and commission to help participate or to help advise on this charter review committee. And there will be three citizens at large on the committee as well. The time expectation, as I understand it, because they want to try to have this on the ballot for May, so they need to have things wrapped up by March. And so this would be a, every approximately two times a month, meeting commitment. I believe they're, they're looking at Thursdays. Did I miss anything?
No. I'm going to work now. It's going to be a time-intensive process. Whoever's involved with it will have to try and make every single meeting. That's one of our, our issues on it. And that's like our constitution, so it's a very important document. So there's not going to be a lot of probably, there's some items that we'll leave in there. And it's, it's available on the city website, so you can look at it, update it and make changes as necessary. You, you will, this is, normally it's not, this time we're trying to make everybody involved in it. In the past, it's been kind of a, just a small group of council that's done it, so. And then once it's completed, each item will be on the ballot separately. So I'll give you some examples that there, some people have tossed around was maybe extending the mayor from two to four. I'm opposed to that. It wouldn't affect me, but no, that, I'm not opposed to it. It may be more fitting with the other cities. One of the other major ones they're talking about is doing away with the, what is it, like districts they have or positions and just making it the top three vote-getters? Or positions and just making it the top three vote-getters, because we feel it might work better that way. And then you can, rather than having one, nobody running against one person and three running against another, it just will, the top three vote-getters would be put on the council. Those are just ideas, and that's what this commission will be in, or committee will be in charge of, and then bring it back to council. Linda Henderson, council president, is in charge of the committee, and she'll, she'll be running the committee.
Yeah.
So when would you expect the committee to start meeting?
Yeah, you can ask the city mayor. He knows more about it than I do, probably, on when. So, and a lot of it will be, you can do a lot of emailing. We're going to give examples and things like that, so. But it, it's a critical document for the city.
I volunteer.
I'd be interested. So both?
I'll be able to do Thursdays.
I can't do another commitment. So we have two people that are interested in this. So.
No, I'm sorry, but I don't.
James and Beth are both interested in, in this. So I guess, how do we, how do we, we need to vote on who we need to send as our representative. That's.
Chair Simpson, if I may, whoever does get selected, I think the mayor is very correct in terms of this is a very public process. You're still going to be able to provide testimony to the committee in terms of your thoughts, so you can't have everybody on the committee. We had two really good candidates the other night in the budget committee, and they, you know, worked through it, and one person got selected. So whoever does not get selected, I want to make sure you realize, you still can be involved, it's just you won't be on the committee itself.
Okay. So any suggestions on how, each want to give a one-minute wrap-up of your, your desire of?
No. However you want, however you want.
We have to vote on it, so.
I'm, so we're choosing either one.
Yeah. Firstly, I, I would like to hear the experience or what you're bringing 30, 30 seconds to the table.
So, and Lafayette actually went through a charter review committee, you know, process, a code review process. And it was, you know, it was fascinating to be part of that, and I think that I could bring, I could bring value to that, having gone through a similar process.
All right, let's vote.
All right.
I vote for Beth.
I vote for, I vote for Beth.
I third it secondly.
Sweet.
All right. Thank you very much. And if, is there any, okay, so that's, that's it. Beth, you are appointed the planning commission charter representative. So planning commission announcements, I don't believe anybody's had any, has anybody had any meetings that they need to report back at? Or are we done with planning commission announcements?
Russell would have been the only one, I believe.
Okay. And he's not here this evening.
He's not here.
Chair Simpson, I think that you attended an open house last week that you might want to mention as a suggestion.
I, yeah, I did. I went to the Washington County TSP open house that was very, very well-attended. And I did, that's where I found out that the council had directed staff to work with them. And I, I guess I was curious to see how it was going to be working through our TSP process, but I was really excited to see all those people there and hope that Washington County hears that this is a very important part to our community, so.
I attended that as well. It was quite well put together.
I did not attend it. I will, I was going to tell you that there's a training opportunity coming up. It would be through the League of Oregon Cities, and it's Saturday, I believe, the 2nd of November. And it is specific to land you. So if there's a specific commissioner, and I know that if you're interested, just let me know. The city has a free seat at the table because we're hosting it, and I'd be more than happy. I've actually had that seat set aside for one of the commissioners, and I'm hoping that one of you take an opportunity to, to go into that. But if not, that's fine.
When is that?
It's the 2nd of November, which is a Saturday, I believe. It's all day. It's put on by the League of Oregon Cities, and that's about all I know about it.
Could you send us a memo? I would just, a brief?
I will. In my follow-up email to tonight, just so everybody gets my announcements, I will make sure that y'all are all abreast of those things.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any more announcements? I don't know, technically, do I need to take a motion to adjourn, or can I just say we're done?
Adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
Yep.
Thank you very much.